Okay, so, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll get started. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, there is quorum.
Okay, so first up, we have committee the whole closed meeting?
I will just ask that everyone signs in quickly, please. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Holland. The council resolved itself into committee the whole closed meeting to consider the following item. Item one, a proposed impending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, third crossing.
Please vote. And that carries. Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. Just before we begin, I'll just, again, highlight that this is National Indigenous Peoples' Month in the city of Kingston. And so, by tradition, at our council meetings in June, we do display the talking stick that normally resides in my office. This was a gift from our local indigenous community and symbolizes the relationship that we continue to build as we move forward in reconciliation. Also, would just highlight that June 21st, of course, are the national celebrations around Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that will be taking place just out in Confederation Park, and certainly hope that as many of you can join me as possible for that. So with that, we will continue on. We were meeting in committee the whole closed meeting. We discussed one item with respect to acquisition or disposition of land with respect to the third crossing. So I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell. The council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the addits. We have a change to a delegation and a withdrawal of a delegation. We have a couple of motions of congratulations. We have an additional item for report number 53. We also have a new motion. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair for a moment?
Thank you, I recognize you.
I just want to take a moment, because the new motion is from myself. And, of course, we do not normally have new motions on the addits. The reason why this is here is because there is a time-sensitive nature, because it respects a potential change to policy over the summer months. So that is why I'm asking councillors to consider this motion tonight. But obviously, I'll reserve my comments until we get to the motion section in the agenda.
And return the chair.
Great, thank you very much. So with that, I'll ask a motion to approve the addits, please. Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Osterhoff. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I, Ryan Bohm, of the council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause five, report number 53, as an employee of utilities Kingston. It may be perceived that I have a pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other declarations, then we will move on. We have no presentations this evening. We do have a couple of delegations. First, Anne Blake, president of Beyond Classrooms Kingston, and Graham Watson, Chair of the Murney Tower Museum Committee, Kingston Historical Society, will appear before council to speak to clause three, report number 53 from the CAO regarding the approval of the administrative plan, City of Kingston Heritage Fund 2018-2019, and the appointment of councillors to participate in the City of Kingston Heritage Fund Jury Review Process in September 2018. And just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening regarding the City of Kingston Heritage Fund. My name is Anne Blake, and I'm the president of Beyond Classrooms Kingston. I'm also intimately familiar with the city's heritage fund as one of its early advocates, starting as a member of the focus group which contributed to the development of the city's culture plan. At the time, I participated formally in my capacity as executive director of the Marine Museum, bringing prior knowledge based on my previous experiences with cultural plan development in Ottawa, Carleton, and in London, Ontario. In 2012, I was hired as managing director of the Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries and Historic Sites, CAM, primarily to work with cultural services staff in the development and implementation of the Heritage Fund component of the culture plan. Currently, as president of Beyond Classrooms Kingston, I'm here representing an organizational recipient of investment and then full operating grants from the fund. I, and a number of others active in the heritage sector with similar records of involvement in the rollout of the city's culture plan, have been concerned by the slow rate of growth of the Heritage Fund, which differs sharply from the level of funding we had been told to anticipate when we first set off down this road. At the time, we were seeking parity with the level of funding the city provided to the arts sector. To that end, we were led to believe that the Heritage Fund would reach a full operating level of $500,000 by 2017, the level the arts fund began with at its start-up in 2007. The reports before you this evening state that the Heritage Fund will actually have $282,662 available for distribution in 2019, far short of that $500,000 threshold. So what's the problem? Well, we were promised parity with the arts fund almost 10 years ago, and that's still not happened. We are seeing increasing levels of application to the operating streams, which, as tonight's report indicate, represent 75% of the total Heritage Fund allocation, so that annual requests are outstripping available funds by a growing margin. While everyone working in the nonprofit sector expects intense competition for funding, especially operating dollars, it's frustrating to face this level of competition before the fund reaches its peak. One consequence of the level of competition is that applicant organizations in receipt of operating dollars from the fund cannot anticipate annual revenues from the fund of at least 80% of their previous year's allocation. This was one of the objectives of the fund, in order to provide a measure of stability for the sector and to permit multi-year planning. As an aside, arts fund operating grant recipients receive the same level of funding annually and have for a number of years. The Heritage Fund process overall is fair and equitable. There's just not enough money in the kitty to go around. In conclusion, members of council, please flag the Heritage Fund for your 29 budget debates, and send a strong message to staff that the fund be permitted to grow at a faster rate than that anticipated in their December 2017 report. Let's get to parity with the arts fund, so that our sector can continue to tell Kingston's many stories, and continue to create a strong sense of place for our residents and visitors. Thank you. I'll now turn the podium over to Graham Watson, Murney Tower and Kingston Historical Society.
Thanks, Anne. So I'd like to bring the points that Anne made home by relating it to my own particular museum, but what I'm about to say applies to all the museum and all the heritage museums. So as a background to our museum, our financial situation is, all the administration is done by volunteers, and the grants I get for work and the admissions just cover my staff. So all the money from the Heritage Fund goes directly into that museum. When the Heritage Fund, we were able to hire a short-term curator. She has catalogued the museum collection of Kingston artifacts representing a large portion of the city's history. She is developing an exhibit recognizing the traditional use of Murney Point by indigenous peoples. She's exploring other grants, so that we can decrease the dependency on the fund. Some of the other activities made possible by the fund, we hosted the Kick and Push Festival, support for local businesses such as improbable escapes, local printing and consulting firms, a local firm that did a laser print of the tower. We use this for access...
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds.
And to show children. So, jumping right to the end, the problem is, I cannot make long-term plans because of lack of stable funding. And other museums and organizations would like to do the same hard work for Kingston, but are held back by limited fundings. Mr. Mayor and council, I urge you to increase the level of heritage funding, so that I and others can fulfill the cultural plan and showcase Kingston to both Kingstonians and the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Shell?
Thank you, your presentation, and having lived through the culture plan and its instigation, are you planning to make this an election issue and perhaps have a actual forum for all the potential candidates to discuss this?
I'm bringing the heart of the museum, Anne, on the advocate committee.
I'm not sure to call it an election issue, but certainly we're going to bring it to the attention of everyone who will be running for council.
Yes, the arts community does do this, and it's been very beneficial for alerting any potential candidate to your issues and the public.
Yes, and that's, we're hoping to do a shared, all-candidates meeting with the arts council.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Sannick?
Thank you, your worship, thanks for the presentation. I just wondered how Kingston compares to other cities that have a heritage fund. So we know that our kitty is $282,000. Do we know how that compares to some of the other cities that have a strong heritage fund as well?
Thank you, councillor. I can't comment on recent, what's happening recently, but certainly at the time, we were developing the fund back in 2012, we did do a comparison with similar municipalities of similar size. I think one of the things that Kingston has that so few other municipalities have is the diversity and the number of museums. And also, the Heritage Fund was divided, or not divided, it was intended to cover all aspects of culture, not just heritage or history. So there's really not a lot of commonality between other municipalities when you look at how their fund is distributed.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, our second delegation this evening, Megan Naught, Executive Director of Kingston Accommodation Partners, and Hugh McKenzie, Vice Chair of Tourism Kingston, will appear before council to speak to clause six of report number 53 from the CAO regarding the municipal accommodation tax implementation plan.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and council. It's great to be here on this very exciting night for the industry, for tourism industry. The Tourism Kingston Board has unanimously supported the introduction of the municipal accommodation tax, a 4% levy to be applied to all hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation and paid by visitors. We do so because we believe this will strengthen the already robust Kingston tourism model, and help our community keep pace with other destinations in Ontario. Based upon my 30 odd years of experience in tourism, I believe the Kingston tourism model is the best in the province and has contributed immensely to our growth and our evolution. The elements of the model are that we have a well-funded destination marketing organization in Tourism Kingston, a DMO that provides the essential staff-intensive resources, such as visitor services and sector market support. We have a collaborative and entrepreneurial hotel association in Kingston with the Kingston Accommodation Partners, providing the marketing resources for the destination. The city has been a great supporter, and has made many capital investments, such as the K-Rock Centre, the Grand Theatre, Market Square, even the Big Dig's, the Waterfront Master Plan, in the support of arts and culture, underpinning the attractiveness of this historic city, benefiting both visitors and residents alike. And we have a downtown business association committed to an entertainment and culinary scene that is the best in class in Canada. Implementing the municipal accommodation tax will provide consistent resources to continue Kingston's award-winning campaigns, and help reach our objective of being a top-four destination in Ontario, particularly for European and Asian markets. As we move forward, our ambition is to develop into a year-round destination. This agreement puts 35% of the amount raised into a development fund to build on the sustainability and the investment opportunities in our industry, and to take advantage of the periodic prospects, like crushing it in the upcoming Briar bid, further advancing our potential and Four Seasons brand. The industry is confident that implementing the MAT will support the continued development of our vibrant community for the benefit of all. Megan?
Thanks, Hugh, and council, and Mayor Patterson. So in addition to Hugh's comments, my name is Megan Naught. I'm the Executive Director of Kingston Accommodation Partners, which is the hotel association, and we've been here to speak about the MAT before. But in addition to Hugh's comments, a few things that probably will stay with you. Tourism as we know it in Kingston is a huge economic driver. It allows roughly $1 billion into our economy every year spent in our community. In addition to that, it supports about 7,500 jobs. So it's an impactful way to measure tourism. In addition, 14 communities, you should know, by the end of 2018, will have a MAT implemented, a municipal accommodation tax, within their community. And so we want to be an additional one of those members in that collection. You should know that Kingston's primary targets domestically, so where we target customers to come from and travelers to come and stay, are generally speaking Montreal, Ottawa, and Toronto. And these are the most expensive markets to be in, in terms of marketing dollar spend. And so the MAT will only help us enhance the ability to speak to those customers and those clients and travelers, and come and experience Kingston as a destination. And one final thing, the timing of the implementation, which is targeted for August 1st, is ideal, only because as we collectively work on this one brand, one voice for tourism in our economy, and the establishment now of our strong DMO led by Rob Calmoto here on my left, the integrated strategy which we're working on with the city of Kingston, it's sort of imperative that the MAT will only enhance the product development and marketing pieces and components that we're working on. And so ideally, just end with a thank you. You've had a really great consensus and collection of support that we felt in the tourism community as stakeholders, through you, Mayor Patterson, and others.
Thirty seconds.
And so, really, we'll just continue to work to grow tourism in our community. And I'll end it there, and take any questions, along with Rob and Hugh.
Right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Shrub?
Thank you, your worship, and if you are the ones to ask this too, but are you aware, is your, are either of your organizations going to do follow-up at a periodic time to, so that we can see results of, after the tax is implemented, if it is implemented, so that we can compare the before and after picture, and have some kind of idea of the effectiveness of it?
Sure. So there's a lot of tours that we collect. Tourism Kingston, on the economic development side, collects economic impact of tourism in Kingston. Specifically, the hotel association does have a year-over-year annual spend of what's happening in our hotels, and an increase year-over-year, as we've seen since we started to measure. So we've been in existence since 2004. So absolutely, if we were to bring back a report, we could ideally pinpoint any statistic you're looking for to complement, and ideally increase the ability to express what the MAT has delivered on, if that makes sense.
Yes, because it's possible that the exact amount of the MAT might need to be adjusted in the future. So we'd like probably to see a follow-up at some point. Thank you.
Councillor Sannick?
Your worship, I know when you were last, one of the next steps was going to be consulting with all the different hotels and bed and breakfasts across the city, and the report says that you did have a lunch and learn, and also one-on-one training sessions. What was the feedback? Was it all positive, or is there some apprehension that this will affect their business, and, you know, that people might stay elsewhere and not actually stay here in Kingston? I just wondered what the feedback was when you held those sessions.
So, we can only have questions of the delegation right now? If that's a question that's better aimed at staff, we can certainly do that.
I can save it. It said that Tourism Kingston and city staff held those sessions.
So what I'll say is, if there's anything you want to say, that's fine. If not, then councillor Sannick will have a chance to ask Commissioner Hurdle later on.
Sure. So we had a very successful lunch and learn, and we've had one-on-one consultation, myself and my colleague Flamey, with others that couldn't attend that lunch and learn. So essentially, what we did was just provide context for what CAP is, so how to remit, when to remit, basically learn, you know, who we are as an organization, and sort of the context of how information that needs to be digested could have been. It was very positive. We had a lot of cap board members and Tourism Kingston colleagues in the room to answer many different questions, that there was probably approximately 20 people that came, which was very beneficial, because I know this time of year, people are busy. And we've had no other feedback from anyone else that this will apply to, in the sense of calling the office and fielding inquiries, so.
That's my second question. It said that there's 14 other cities across Ontario that are also implementing this municipal accommodation tax. What would be the closest one to Kingston? Would it be Ottawa, or is there, like Belleville, Brockville, Peterborough, any of those that are also implementing it?
Ottawa started January 1st, and they've been doing very well with the rollout. Toronto started April 1st, 2018. Ganonakwe is looking at starting. Brockville, as I know it, they didn't have a well-established DMO/DMP situation like we have in Kingston, so their, their sort of formula's a bit different. They've ideally tried to start with a small number of rooms. Mississauga, Niagara Falls, Belleville are beginning to start implementing at some point in 2018, but probably relatively the closest ones would be Toronto and Ottawa.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Let's get from what you were saying, that the idea is that we're looking at an integrated program, actually, that the MAT will come out about the same time that we will have an integrated branding result? Is that sort of what I'm hearing, and that will help? Or is this going to be a staff question?
That's a staff question.
Okay, I will leave it, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Okay, so we have no other delegations this evening, so we will move on. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none. We do have a couple of motions of congratulations. First, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. "That the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Ian Arthur, the newly-elected MPP for Kingston and the Islands. We look forward to working with you over the next four years for the betterment of our community. Congratulations, Ian." Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. "That the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Randy Hillier, who was re-elected as the MPP for Lanark-Fronnak Kingston, I believe, on Thursday night. We look forward to working with you over the next four years for the betterment of our community and the surrounding region. Congratulations, Randy." So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, we have no deferred motions tonight, so we will move on to reports. First, we have report number 53 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Ossannick, seconded by councillor McLaren. That report number 53 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so we have removed, or rather separated, item number five for councillor Bohm's pecuniary interest. We will also need to separate item number three. Are there any other separations? Deputy Mayor Holland?
Number six, please.
Okay, we will also separate number six. Okay, so just a, just a note also that number seven on the addits is an amendment to number six. So what we will do is, we will go through that one first, and then item six will be amended. It's just the one paragraph. Okay, so first, we will call the vote, then on, two, we'll go on the balance of the items. So item number one is the railway right-of-way property taxation. Item two, award of contract merchant services for new perfect mind system. Item four, award of contract digital sound console for the Grand Theatre. And item seven, supplementary report to report number 18-175. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, so first, we have clause three, approval of the administrative plan, City of Kingston Heritage Fund 2018-2019, and the appointment of councillors to participate in the City of Kingston Heritage Fund Jury Review Process in September 2018. So we do need a couple of councillors to volunteer for the review committees. One is for the project grants review, and one is for the operating grants review. Could I have any volunteers, please? Councillor Hutchison, do you have a preference for which committee?
I'll do the operating grants.
Very much. Can I have another volunteer project grants? Councillor Shell, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other names, you're both acclaimed. Congratulations. So with that, we will call the vote on clause three, please. And that carries. Clause five, completion of the municipal energy study. So councillor Bohm has stepped away, so we will call the vote, please. And that carries. And then finally, we have clause six, the municipal accommodation tax implementation plan. Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. So a question on the exemptions to staff, I believe. I've received communication from a resident who was concerned about the fact that he travels to Kingston to visit his daughter, who is in a long-term care facility. And so in looking at the exemptions, there are, it's noted that there are sort of public institutions, Ministry of Health, a long-term care, but I'm wondering if such a thing as a visit to a family member or an extended stay due to illness is something that has been considered as part of the discussions on exemptions.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. So the closest thing to this, and I appreciate these situations can be quite challenging, but if you look at the actual bylaw itself, on the page two of five in the exemption list, so we do have exemptions that are made if these arrangements are made through the hospitals or long-term care facilities, and that actually comes from the province. This is not something that the city has decided to go on its own and set the exemption. So it all depends on how this is organized, and who's actually making the reservation. If the individual is coming on its own, and it's through a private reservation and room booking, then the municipal accommodation tax would apply.
Okay, yes, councillor Shrub?
For those watching this with interest, if staff could just elaborate a little bit about how the Airbnb sector will interact with this, from my reading, there's like a two-step process, and the Airbnb is proposed to be included with the MAT, but not in not until rental licensing is debated and possibly passed. Is there anything more to it that staff, for context, that staff could, could say about the Airbnb sector? Because it's obvious that it will give them a competitive advantage versus the hotel rooms in the interim.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you are correct, Counselor, that the Airbnb are proposed to be exempted from the municipal accommodation tax. Having said that, we do anticipate that we are going to be bringing the residential licensing program to committee and council in, actually to committee in August and then council most likely in September. And at that time, should council support the residential licensing program, which would enable us to actually license and be able to work with the Airbnbs, we would be able to have a system where we could easily apply the municipal accommodation tax. And what we would do is amend the bylaw to reflect that they would be no longer exempted.
Okay, so related to that point, then, should council decide not to go with rental licensing, that would make it, from what you've just said, a lot harder to include the Airbnb in the MAT and also to regulate the Airbnbs themselves because we wouldn't have a licensing program? Is that correct?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, the starting point would make it a lot more difficult to, to regulate the Airbnbs and those types of accommodation. And even if council decided not to implement potentially the full program, we might want to look at options that, that could potentially cover Airbnbs without covering all other residential, but that's something we would have to review. And at that point, we would be, or we would recommend to also incorporate the municipal accommodation tax.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So I'll ask my question about the, so the idea is we'll introduce the MAT tax and probably have our integrated branding completed, that the idea is we're going to have a package. We're not only adding a tax, but we will have a way to spend it that's been thoroughly researched. Does that sound about right?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and definitely do not want to speak for Tourism Kingston and Kingston Accommodation Partners, but I'm sure they could find ways right now that they could spend the marketing dollars. But to your question, there is work that's currently being completed on the integrated destination strategy, which involves the key stakeholders in the community. And that is anticipated will most likely be coming back to council around the early fall, which is around the same time as the implementation of the municipal accommodation tax. It will give some recommendation as far as future investment. The report also refers to a, a consolidated plan, if you wish, or an integrated marketing plan that's going to be put together by Tourism Kingston, Kingston Accommodation Partner, with some involvement from the city and primarily from the Cultural Services Department.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, your questions or comments, we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, moving on to report number 54 from Planning Committee.
It's my honor this evening to present report 54 from the Planning Committee. Please receive and be adopted by council. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Turner, Counselor Ossanik, that report number 54 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are the two clauses, so we will vote on them as one. Clause one, it's approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 311 Conacre Drive. And clause two, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 434 and 438 Johnson Street. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 55 from Heritage Kingston.
To submit report five from Heritage Kingston, it is moved and seconded for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shell, that report number 55 from Heritage, Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are several items under both the statutory and non-statutory consultation. We'll vote on everything as a whole unless anyone wants any of the items separated. Seeing none, we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, report number 56 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. It is my pleasure to present report number 56 from the Administrative Policies Committee for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Holland, seconded by Counselor Camden, that report number 56 from the Ministry of Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, just the one clause, 2017 audited financial statements. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 57 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise to submit report 57 from EITP. See, we've got the clerk here, for council's consideration. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that report number 57 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, again, just the one clause, update on amended blue box program plan and material recovery facility. We will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, report number 58 from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee.
Thank you. I wish to present report number 58 from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Shell, and I have been asked by the clerk to receive a friendly amendment for removing the name of Emily Pellstring from the two appoint, two appointments, resolutions, because she's unable to attend and do the work. So if that's okay with council, we can go ahead.
So that's a friendly, friendly amendment? Thank you. Okay.
That was moved by Counselor, Counselor Shell, that report number 58 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are the three clauses. Number one, appointments to the poet laureate working group. Number two, appointments to the mayor's arts awards nominations working group. And number three, 2017 Arts Advisory Committee Annual Report Card. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, moving on, nothing from committee of the whole tonight. Information reports, if you have any questions, as I go through them, please raise your hand. First, first quarter operating budget status report for 2018. Number two, new citywide zoning bylaw status update and next steps. Number three, public engagement status report. Okay, no information reports from members of council. Onto miscellaneous business. Number one, that is requested by Pollinator Partnership Organization, that council proclaim June 18th to June 24th, 2018 as Pollinator Week in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. Number two, that is requested by Kingston Writers Fest, that council proclaim September 28th, 2018 as Kingston Writers Fest Day in the City of Kingston. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. And that carries. Number three, that is requested by Sam Asselstein on behalf of the International Association for Healthcare Security and Safety Organization, that council proclaim October 14th to October 20th, 2018 as National Healthcare Security and Safety Week in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff. And that carries. Number four, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4 subsection five of the Illumination of City Facilities Policy, Kingston City Council approved the Illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square on June 14th, 2018 for St. Lawrence College Kingston campus convocation. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Turner. And that carries. Number five, that the resignation of Megan Kerrigan from Heritage Kingston be received with regret. Have a mover, please. Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Bohm. And that carries. Number six, that the resignation of Patricia Fiori from Heritage Kingston be received with regret. Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Bohm. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Okay, onto new motions. We have one new motion and I'm going to ask if the deputy mayor would take the chair, please.
For Bo, oh, sorry, the other is notice of motion. I'm sorry. Okay, yes, new motion, number one. I take the chair. Thank you. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Turner. Whereas the City of Kingston currently has a park refreshment vehicle policy that allows motorized and non-motorized vehicles to sell food and beverages in a number of city parks, city designated parks. And whereas recent market trends have recently introduced small, non-vehicle self-contained food and beverages, beverages vendor options. And whereas the City of Kingston is an innovative city and wants to encourage new market trends, therefore be it resolved that council directs staff to implement a pilot project in the summer of 2018 by inviting non-vehicle self-contained food and beverage vendors to submit their applications to provide a service in designated city parks. And that council directs staff to review the success of the pilot project and make appropriate amendments to the park refreshment vehicle policy for this, for the summer 2019 season. Mayor Patterson?
Thank you very much. So just to provide a little bit of context for this motion, about a couple of months, I was invited by an entrepreneur here in the city to a West End industrial space to have a look at a new innovation that he's come up with for, for, for food and beverage service in the city and is a coffee shop within a shipping container. And I'll be honest with you, I was intrigued by the idea, but when I saw it in person, it was really quite exciting and it seemed like something that this could really work. So everything is self-contained, essentially it needs to be serviced on a daily basis. But the idea that was presented to me is that we could look at trying something like this in, in a city park, at different spaces around the city, obviously then to be able to provide that service convenience if people are, are out in a park and then they could, could then be able to purchase small food and beverages. So I think it's a really interesting idea. Again, certainly having seen it in person, I was convinced it, it looks great, it's attractive, obviously there's other details to be worked out. But basically, what this motion would allow is for a pilot project to be able to try that out this particular summer, and that's why we had to bring it forward to this meeting. So with that, certainly would hope for council's support on this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Shell.
Just to comment, I watch TV, diners, drive-ins and dives, and I've seen these. They do look really exciting. So I'm, that's great, fully support this. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will call the vote on new motion number one. And it passes. I return the chair.
Thank you very much. So we have no other new motions, we'll move on to a notice of motion. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas the United Nations Environmental Program estimates that eight million tons of the plastic produced globally every year finds its way into our oceans, food chains and ecosystems, damaging our health in the process. And whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities at their June 2018 annual conference adopted a motion that among other things urges the federal government to create a national strategy to mitigate and manage marine litter with emphasis on plastics. And whereas several forms of single-use plastics cannot be effectively recycled or reused in Kingston and end up as landfill waste or litter. And whereas Kingston is a Great Lakes community with responsibilities to and benefits from a clean lake environment. And whereas the City of Kingston is committed to diverting waste from landfill and to reducing community greenhouse gas emissions, therefore be it resolved that council directs staff to provide a report with recommendations in 2019 to the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee meeting regarding the current status of single-use plastics management in Kingston and options for local action to reduce litter and waste created by the use and disposal of single-use plastics in Kingston. Okay, so moving on to minutes, Mr. Clerk?
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2018-14 held Tuesday, May 15th, 2018 be confirmed?
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that bylaws two, one, two and six through 12 be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that bylaws three through 12 be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.